Item B, receive report and provide direction to staff on additional alternatives for intersection improvements on Susan Drive.
Please Jimmy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. Item in front of you tonight is regards to the intersection improvements on Susan Drive. Back on October 10th last year, we presented the results of the comprehensive traffic study completed by the traffic engineering firm TJKM. Got evaluated the existing conditions along Susan Drive and several potential enhancements to improve sight distance, reduce vehicle speeds, and enhance safety for all modes of traffic. Five different alternatives were presented during the meeting. The first was to not do anything at the intersection. And the others were to add pavement markings with striped bulbous and installing stop signs on these minor streets along Susan Drive. And one of the other option was to install concrete bulbous at these intersections and also to install a raised intersections to reduce vehicle speeds. And the last one that we presented was to paint red curbs along Susan Drive near the intersection. So the estimated cost for each alternative was presented and the cost ranged from approximately $18,000 to $587,000. So during the meeting, staff recommended the recommendations by TSPC for council's consideration, which is the installation of the concrete bulbous improvements at the intersections. The estimated cost for that option was approximately $432,000. The council supported staff's and TSPC recommendation, but expressed concern about the high cost of the alternative and requested staff to develop and evaluate lower cost options for consideration. So we're here tonight to present additional options for council's consideration. All of these options consider several factors that included level of protections provided to pedestrians, the effect on drainage, and ease of use for visually impaired pedestrians and cost. So the first alternative that we are presenting is similar to the one that was presented in the TJKM recommendations, which is to use striping at the intersections. And although this option does not affect drainage, it provides the least amount of protection for pedestrians and it will pose some challenge to visually impaired residents as, you know, since the crosswalk will be closer to the intersections towards the street, there'll be no means of protection or to guide them into the crosswalk. So here are just some of the examples that we found online here. You know, in San Francisco, they used some colored at the intersections to for like type of bulbous. And there's a picture that we found from New York at the intersections there. And the bottom one that, you know, the striped kind of bulbous locations to deter cars from driving in that location. So and that's something that we're, that was one of the options that we're considering. The second option that we're, that we consider is to adding what's called a channelizers. These are, you know, just flexible plastic posts about, you know, two inch in diameter and three feet tall. And this option provides some protection for pedestrians, but still pose some challenges to the visually impaired pedestrians. There's not a continuous detectable path for them. And this option will create some difficulties for street cleaning equipment. So here's just some options that we found online too at these intersections. So there's post at these corners and colorful paving that's been placed there from Seattle into these two locations. So the third option that we are looking at is to include the striping and the, what is called asphalt dyke or a concrete curb. And these, these dyke or curb is approximately maybe six inch high, similar to a freestanding curb or berm. And this option uses the dyke to create some level of protection for the pedestrians. And the drainage will be impacted, but these breaks in the berms can be provided to allow for water to flow. This option also has some issues with maintenance as trash may accumulate inside the, and sweeping equipment may not have, may not be able to get into it to clean. So show you some examples of what we found, show you this in Washington DC. So you see that there's this concrete little berms areas that with, with channelizers installed. So the last option, and this is another type of a concrete berm that's placed on the intersection. So the last option is basically all of everything in one. So we're looking at striping, channelizers, and AC berms to have all, all three components placed into one alternative. So this is what we're currently recommending as an option to collude. And all of the costs were evaluated and the cost shown in the staff report, it's a bit low because it didn't include the striping improvements on Susan Drive and the replacement of the crosswalks with continental style crosswalks and installation of the stop signs on the minor street. So once these additional costs were included, the cost is as follows. So we're ranging from about $23,000 to $71,000 in our options. So we're here tonight to seek council's further direction on these improvements and there are no fiscal impact to this update. And this concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the report. Questions to staff?
Through the chair.
Please, Michael.
So can you talk a little bit about the overall concerns that we've had in the area? Because it seems like we're focused a lot on pedestrian safety on the corners and sight visibility, but I understood that there were some bigger issues with overall the speed on, on that. And I don't think that this addresses that at all. I've also heard concerns in that neighborhood about the parking and it looks like this solution would minimize the loss of parking. But I don't see it addressing the speed issue. So was the study that, that was commissioned, did that focus on speed at all or was it strictly about visibility at the intersections?
So both, both were looked at. Also the mainly was the sight distance issue that was, that was reviewed at the intersections because, because of an accident that happened in 2014. And also the way the intersections are configured, towards the minor street, when the cars are approaching Susan Drive, they're unable to see the uncommon traffic. So there's, you know, there's sight distance issues at these intersections. One of the alternatives that was presented in the TJKM's report was to install raised intersections to reduce vehicle speeds and that was included as part of the alternatives. Parking was also reviewed as part of the report. We were looking at removing, but with the rest, with red curbing alternative and without any bulbous that was included, we're looking at about 30 parking spaces that were going to be removed as part of the alternative. And the remaining other alternatives looked at, or the total of about 14 spaces that will be removed as part of those alternatives.
So with any of these alternatives, we lose 14 spaces?
Correct.
Right. But again, getting back to my original question, it really does nothing to address the speed of the cars that are going up and down Susan.
Not with these alternatives, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Were there questions from council? Marty?
Do we know yet exactly what we're getting? Are the staff still deciding on the colors? Cause I saw a lot of different colors up there and I, you know, just wanted to have a better understanding of what we're approving, what we could approve tonight of, of those various options. Do we have a final design or where are we with that?
We don't have a final design. It's many of the concepts that we're, we're presenting here tonight because there's so many variations that we can do at these intersections, right? It really depends on the, the cost factor. So the alternative that we presented back on October 10th was to install the concrete bulbous, which was the recommended alternative that the city, that the TSPC and staff actually was in favor of. You know, due to the cost of that, so these are the other types of different alternatives that we're presenting tonight. And it, you know, it's a more less cost effective alternative and may have the same effect as well as a concrete bulbous.
Right. I recall that. So if we were going to choose the, the largest one combined everything, do we know the colors that you're going to be putting in there?
No, it's, no, those colors are just an example of what other agencies have done. So we, you know, we can select any colors we want or we can choose to just put stripes, striping down at the, at the intersections.
Okay. Other questions? Council?
I'll try to talk through this process a little bit. So and I want to follow up with Michael's questions because I had the same concern. So the speed on Susan Drive is not going to be addressed in this process, in this solution, right? The speed on Susan Drive is a unique situation because you have going north and south on Susan, really no oncoming traffic from the right side. You've got sort of a free rain and vehicle speed. It's just, it's tendency speed. You can't, the traffic, it's my understanding, the traffic and then you can, staff can clarify if a request for a stop sign at those intersections were requested, but that was denied because there wasn't a need. And you can't install a, a stop sign when you're trying to control speed. Stop signs are installed due to crossing the street. No one's crossing Susan Drive. They're crossing Jeffrey, they're crossing some of the other side streets. So crossing the intersection is not the issue. Really what we're trying to address, and I think it's the main point, and that is vehicles exiting one of the side streets onto Susan Drive and ensuring their safety. A vehicle coming off of Susan Drive, coming onto that intersection. So if I'm at the intersection of Jeffrey Drive and Susan and I want to go out onto Susan, I'm trying to create a space for me to kind of come out a little further and have better view and to add either the striping, the striping, the channelizers, the striping and the, and the asphalt dykes. All those pieces hopefully increase my perception of being able to clear visibility. So striping, we all know, isn't going to make the answer, right? It's not going to prevent a vehicle from driving over those painted lines. I don't know the color is going to make a difference either. Might help, but I don't think it's really going to encourage it. Channelizers help identify that specific area by a little bumps, but again, I don't think that's going to do it. I think if we're going to do anything, I think we really need to prevent the vehicles from driving into that specific area and that you're going to need to do the dyke, some sort of raised concrete. Is it pretty? No, but safety is a concern. And I think it's a process, we go through this process. I think it's a unique situation in this neighborhood. But it's also something that I'm concerned about in other parts of San Bruno. So I don't want to do something that doesn't make sense. The 400 and something thousand dollars makes no sense. We can't afford that in the city to go out and spend that kind of money at different intersections. I think this is a good cost effective way to try to address the entering and exiting off of Susan Drive from one of those side streets. And I, so I'm thinking that we need to go at least include the dykes into that process.
Will ring?
She said it all, what can I say?
Michael, please.
I do agree with her. I do have a concern about cleanliness up there and I know we were talking and some other people were talking about doing, adopt a storm drain. So maybe we could get people to adopt that area to keep it clean.
Michael.
So Jimmy, all the, the pictures that you showed us, they were all, none of those were residential areas. So I mean, is it, I would imagine that this is pretty uncommon in a residential neighborhood. Those all look like big thoroughfares. And they all look like busy intersections where there probably would be a lot of pedestrian traffic and something like this would make sense. But I mean, have we seen this anywhere else in a residential neighborhood?
We were, have you, Michael?
Yeah.
I haven't actually, but yeah.
Michael.
So I think you're right in your observation about the photos that we showed, but it is not a situation where these are not used in residential neighborhoods. They do get used in residential neighborhoods as part of traffic calming.
Okay. And, and do we really believe that had this, one of these solutions been in place at the time that that motorcycle accident occurred, that it would have prevented it or could have prevented it?
I won't be able to answer that. It really depends on the driver at, at that moment. But I would think the, by having the, the, the crosswalks a little bit closer towards the, the street and allowing the driver to be able to approach, you know, the street a little bit further out, he'll be able to see the uncommon traffic. So that I can say that it'll improve the visibility of that intersection if, if the improvements are made.
Okay.
Marty, please.
So it's hard to say if it would have stopped anything, you know, it's hard to prevent an accident, but the lawsuit was something that I was, maybe the city attorney could probably shed some light on where there wasn't anything out there. And the lawsuit was pushing for, for the city to be responsible for not having anything out there. So we're doing something to improve the safety. It will not solve the speed. Speed is, is something that you can't solve without doing the speed study and determining what, what the safe speed for that street would be. And Laura summed it up real well, thought outputting a stop sign isn't going to do anything for speed. So I was wondering if we could, if the city attorney could possibly just a little bit of information on the lawsuit and why the settlement was made for such a large amount of money.
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. So I, I don't think we're here to re, re-debate what, what the cause of the accident was. I think all auto accidents often have multiple complicated causes and the facts are unclear. In many of these cases, they were unclear in, in that case. We're also not here, I think, to speculate about whether these improvements would or would not have prevented that accident from occurring. I think the city's goal instead in spending a great deal of time and money with all of these studies and investigations has been to make each of those intersections onto Susan Drive, not just the one that was involved in the accident, but each of those intersections as safe as possible, both for vehicles that are exiting those streets, as Council Member Davis has indicated, onto Susan Drive, but also make it safer for the cars that are traversing so that on Susan, so that they can see those, those vehicles. And while maximizing the sight distance, also maximizing the amount of, of parking that's available and stated another way to, to minimize the loss of parking. So those were the goals of the, of the city. And speed had been an issue before. You're, you're right about that. That's been addressed in a number of ways over, over the years up there. There have been concerns about parking. There were concerns about sight distance and that's, that's the reason why we're, we're here tonight. So I think it's important that, that the alternatives before you are really intended to make the entire area safer for vehicles on all of those side streets, pedestrians and the vehicles on, on Susan Drive.
So this is obviously an item for receiving the report and giving direction to staff, which can be at any level or whatever we need to feel comfortable with to go back. Is there any thoughts from council on what direction they'd like to give to staff?
Through the chair?
Please, Michael.
I was just wondering if the members of the, of the Traffic Safety and Pedestrian Committee have any, anything to add based on their observations, residents from the neighborhood, anything to add?
John is saying no on, on the, for the committee. Tom, no. Tom, I'll go.
I will echo that the whole point and the whole reason behind our recommendation, the initial recommendation of the curbs, the bulbous, was not to address speed. The, and we do understand that speeding on Susan Drive is a, is a concern. We did recommend increased enforcement. There's really not a lot that can be done from an engineering perspective to address speed on Susan, at least not from the, not from the information that has been brought before us. You know, raised tables in the, in the intersections and other quite expensive things might, might do the trick, but those are, those were not the options brought before us. What we were asked to do was to, what you guys have, have been already, already saying, make these intersections safer by allowing the cars from the side street greater visibility. The other option that we had for doing that was a real super cheap option, which was to red zone as far down as necessary to ensure that a car stopping where the limit line is today can see adequately up and down the street. And that was going to remove dozens and dozens of more spaces. So that was, that was not an option because of the parking crunch that's in that neighborhood. So that's why, that's why we're at where we are right now. Thank you. One other thing, the, by bringing these bulbous out to the, the traffic lane, it does, from my understanding from other things that we've done, it would provide at, at least just for the southbound traffic, a visual narrowing of the lanes, which we have seen to reduce speed in some areas, similar to what we, what happens with the limit lines. So it would do nothing for northbound speed, but southbound speed might have a small benefit.
Before you leave town, so I, I know you guys have looked at a lot of different options and you have the, the toolkit that you refer to occasionally. Anything else in the toolkit that, that you would recommend that could possibly help with reducing the speed?
Just the, the raised intersections.
That was the only thing that was out there.
That's it. I mean, the, did we talk about, excuse me, did we mention putting a speed? Oh, the speed signs? Speed sign, I thought that was, that's been discussed. That's an option. The, those have mixed effectiveness. Sometimes especially on, sometimes we, we get people who actually see it as a challenge to see how high they can get the number. So you don't necessarily want that. I don't know if they would be effective here and I think staff would be more qualified to answer that question than I.
If I could just be insert here, the city attorney did remind me that some time ago, the city did take action to enhance signage along Susan Drive, the speed signage. In addition to that, we, we do periodic enforcement, what do they call it? Enhanced enforcement, shall we say, extra eyes on speed issues. And this was, as council members may recall, Susan Drive was part of our recent speed study. And so it's, it's not an issue that we have neglected or ignored. And as various individuals have said, speed is a, is a, in many respects, a ongoing management issue, which is very tough to address in a, in a conclusive manner.
Is there anybody else from the public who wanted to speak or please? Well, they're not going to be able to hear you or see you at home. It's your, it's your claim to fame, huh? Come on now.
Through the chair, if I may, while the gentleman is going to the microphone, there's one other important aspect of the design of the improvements for all of these intersections. It's not obvious unless you, you're out there, which I know many of you have been, but the actual geometry and elevations of each of those intersections is different. And the, the first thing that I noticed when I went out there and spent a lot of time at each of those intersections is how different the perspectives are from cars coming out of each of those, of those roads. And so that's one of the reasons that necessitated a design that was proposed like this so that you have a consistent design among all of those intersections so you don't get so much visual clutter that each intersection is looking different, which isn't aesthetically pleasing either.
All these, these issues are very important. However, the biggest issue is the parking. The parking is what's causing the problems on the intersections because the people are parking in the intersections. When you come down one of the streets, you can't see anything. The speed up there is horrendous. They lowered the speed limit down from 45 to 25, which simply meant the people coming down slowed down from 60 to 50. Now I have to come out of my driveway daily. I narrowly miss getting hit on a daily basis. There are so many cars parked on the street that we can't see anything coming out of our driveway. We're in the middle of the block and this has been going on for years. I've lost three cars up there because of speed. So I mean, it's, it's something that has to be addressed. Accident that you're referring to, that was long overdue. Someone up there is going to get killed. It's got to be addressed. The speed is the biggest issue. Secondly, the parking. The apartments on the top of the hill said when they were building, and I went to one of the meetings, they were going, going to have underground parking, they're going to have ample parking for two, 300 cars. Never materialized. Now they tell the people if they have two cars, rather than pay an additional $200 for parking, park down Susan Drive. Yesterday, excuse me, the day before I was coming home, guy's coming in with a truck to park in front of my house. I asked him, please don't do that because I haven't parked there. He moved. Yesterday I was gone for half an hour. His truck was right there. I put a note on his car, please don't park here. Park where you live. He came down, got in his truck, drove around the block, parked two houses up from me. This is an ongoing problem. We sit in our living room in the evening and I hear cars going down the street, they have to be doing 60 plus miles an hour. Someone's going to get killed. So it has to be addressed. Thank you.
Mr., for the record, is Mr. Downs, what's, and what street?
Susan.
Susan Drive? Well, it's for the record. Susan Drive. Thank you. Other comments?
Just one last one.
Please.
So my, my only concern with all of this is it only seems that we're making it safer for people to speed on there. And it, it almost doesn't address the, the real issue, which is the speed. And if we were able to control the speed, then all these other things would probably be unnecessary. So that, that's really my, my only concern with this. I, I think that, you know, the, the solutions that you proposed are, are very thoughtful and, and I appreciate the fact that you guys went back and came back with the, with the cheaper solutions than what we saw last time or what the, the last council saw last time. But it really still does seem that we need to do something about the speed. Now, I, I think on most of Susan Drive, on the non-populated side, that's all red curb? Is that, is that correct? It's all?
The east side?
On the skyline side?
It's, it's, there's no parking along that side, yeah.
So would there be any opportunity at any point there to allow parking on that side and effectively narrow the street and?
No, there's not enough width.
There's not enough width?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Marty? I thought you were, I'm sorry.
No, I was thinking that the, the direction that we provide would, I would be in favor of option four.
Any thoughts from council for direction to staff?
Oh, I understand why we would want, I, I would, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I had a cold and, and medication and I'm kind of whatever. But anyway, striping and asphalt, concrete dykes, I think is enough to do what we need to do without adding the extra pieces to it and it's a reasonable price. I understand what Councilman Salazar is saying about addressing the speed, but as the other gentleman said, it's about parking. So you can't, you, the option to red curb everything was given to us before and there was complaints about that would take away all parking from everybody's. We had options about controlling the speeding, which was horribly expensive. I think this will do what it should do and then maybe we can address some kind of, I don't know what, parking permit maybe or something like that up in that area. So that might help alleviate. The problem with parking permits is again enforcement. So now there's, there's no easy solution for any of this, but maybe some kind of combination will help. So I would suggest that we do number three.
Laura?
I also have a concern, as Michael has stated, with the speed and that we should do something. And I think, you know, we're limited on our ability to what we can do, but I think, I know that there's been recent improvements. I'd like to see if staff can go back and look at potentially other options for improving the lessening of the speed on that, on Susan Drive. So I would like to make that as part of a recommendation, but I also am willing to accept item number three, which is including the striping, the asphalt, the dykes. In terms of parking, if you were attending a meeting here last week, you would hear it's not just on Susan that the parking is an issue.
it's not just on Susan that the parking is an issue, it's everywhere. Shelter Creek is an overflow of problems, lower parts of San Bruno are overflow of problems. But I guess I would ask a question is, I hear, I've heard that comment a few times, that the residents aren't parking at the complex because they don't want to pay for parking. So I don't know if staff has gone back to the complex to see, is there anything that they can do by offering more parking, number one, and is that true that really residents aren't, aren't parking there? I mean, reality of it is, is that, you know, apartments who are rented out or condos are sold for two bedrooms and two people live there, and nowadays it's two, four, and six and eight families living in these places, because they just simply can't afford it. So the parking that was available or provided when the, this development was built was adequate, but times are changing. Nobody can afford homes over a million dollars. So I think that's a, a part of the problem as well. But anything that we can do from a staff point of view, by contacting, communicating, and ensuring that they're doing everything possible on their site, that they're utilizing the parking on their site to the best of their ability, that would be appreciative. And anything that staff can think of outside the box about trying to reduce speed, I think we should. I, I see a sign that says you're going 35 miles an hour and 25, it makes me slow down. So I think there are people who do listen to that. I'm not sure what staff thinks in recommending that, but if we can spend some time in trying, in trying to improve the speed, I think, I don't want to come back here talking about another incident that occurred, that we couldn't do more. So I'd like to see if we can do more about speed. And I'm willing to support item three, which is striping, asphalt, dykes, concrete curb.
Michael? Your option?
Absolutely.
So Jimmy, the, the asphalt dyke option, concrete curb, how permanent is that? If we decided that it's causing too much trouble with street sweeping or flooding or whatever, how, could we yank them out?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And, and in that case, then I'll, I'll go along with option three.
Okay. Okay, so what I've heard is, and correct me, council, I've heard one for option four, three for option three. I've also heard about trying to reach out to the complexes up there to check and communicate with their management as far as parking and concerns from the community in the neighborhood. I've also heard a comment from council as far as speed is still a concern that they'd like to have looked into, whether it's the speed sign that's on Crestmore, or if there's some other options that can be looked at, but not to let that fall off the radar, because there obviously seems to be a concern. Though we do know in the end, parking is what we hear, as Mr. Downs said, is that they're parking in areas, and unless we redzone it all, which we could, and it does prevent it, but then the neighborhood has to understand the parking will even be tighter. And I do know that those homes fortunately have, for the most part, two, a driveway for two vehicles and a garage for two vehicles. So there is parking upon the persons who are there in the complexes, that's probably another issue. I know that we've also learned in the parking permit aspect is that you can't prohibit an apartment dwelling, a unit up there, to say they can't get parking permits to park on Susan. You cannot tell them that they can't when others can in, in the residential area. So I don't know if that could help or not. Did I assess that fair from what I heard this evening from council? Does staff have direction?
We do. We'll proceed with option number two, or three.
Three.
Sorry.
I forgot to ask you what your choice was, yeah.
We'll look at speed, and we'll make contact with the, there's actually two apartment complexes, I think, that are at issue here. We'll check in with both of them.
Thank you. Anything else to me? We're good.